I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming. And we will go through the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are at 10:02 and I will open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2014-15 budget amendment and ask for any comments. No comments. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and move to number seven, which is approval of the fiscal year 2014-15 budget amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment appropriations.
I'll second that. What was that, Kelly?
Roll call.
Oh. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Ron?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye, motion carries. Next we have is resolution amendment appropriations, budget amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution budget amendment appropriations.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oh, roll call, you're right.
Ron?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye, motion carries. Next is sheriff's quarterly report.
I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's quarterly report.
I'll go ahead and second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries sheriff's annual report.
I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's annual report.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. GIS quarterly report, Micah, we have you.
I hope you guys received a copy of it. I gave it to Nancy last Wednesday. Did you guys get a copy of it?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. I never know whether to print it for you or just email it.
She asked, she did one copy of it print for us instead of three.
I just figured, try to save the printing if necessary. No big surprises, this kind of summarizes the whole year, so budget-wise, it gets a summary. We, end of the year with expenses 34% remaining, so yay. And the revenue that I projected came in about exactly the same, so I guess I'm a good guesser or predictor. It's been pretty quiet the last three months. We had finished up the land use layer, that was our big winter project, and we're now getting ready to incorporate it into the assessors database. That's what's going to be going on in the next two weeks, so hopefully that will be a non-event and successful. I've been working with Roxanne, with EOC, trying to print off maps and gather any extra maps I have of all the communities in the Coop County, should a disaster hit, say, Union. I would like to be able to go and pull out Union maps right away, so that people, even if we don't have electricity, or a printer, or anything like that, you know, start running on maps and we can start doing that. So I've been kind of working, I've got about half the communities done, I've got all the county, countywide maps done, and we're just kind of storing them in the LEC, so that they'll be where the home base location disaster occur. And I printed off DOT maps of all the surrounding counties, so if something should happen on the Grandy County border, we've got Grandy County maps right available. And it seems silly to recreate what the DOT is already doing, which is pretty good with maps. So we're working at finishing that up and kind of stocking up the EOC with what we anticipate would be wanted, knowing that we can never quite anticipate all this stuff. We're still working with the city of Eldora. They've been slowly mapping their utilities, and it's their busy time now, so our work has been quieted down, and I'm sure it'll begin in September and October. These things get pretty busy. Other than that, you guys can take a look at it at your leisure. Nothing too extraordinary.
All right, thank you. You also did new plat books.
And we were working on updated plat books, yes, with the directory.
I can ask for accepting GIS quarterly report.
I will make a motion to accept the GIS quarterly report.
I will second that. Any discussion? Everything looks good.
Thanks, Micah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next we have applications for fireworks permits. We have two of these.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fries family get-together. They have yeses on everything other than the training part, where the previous question, they said they'd been handling fireworks for seven years. Everything else, all the safety issues are squared away, so I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks permit application.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve Vern Schwartz family. Everything looks good. Yeses across the board for safety and training, so I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second that one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is number 13, which is a request for HIPAA compliance training. With our region, they've put together, I'll let Lynn talk about it a little bit.
Well, you know, each county has different departments that are required to be HIPAA compliant, and HIPAA is a federal law that's been in place for many years. And so in the past, we've been part of a seven-county region, where we had a HIPAA person, a privacy officer. That actually ended July, I think July 1st of 13, so about a year ago. The new region, that Harden County is part of, the 10-county region, has decided that we will offer that service not only to the mental health departments in each of our counties, but also to the other departments that are covered. So they just wanted a confirmation from the county, from the Board of Supervisors, saying that yes, we would like the HIPAA program offered through CICS to cover those other departments also, or no, you know, we could choose not to. It's being offered at no charge. I think we used to pay at least $3,000 or $4,000 a year for that coverage and for that technical assistance. So they're going to offer, I think there's three different levels. There's the policies, which there have been some changes in HIPAA, so there's new policies that have to be written. There's technical assistance, and then I think there's, I don't remember what the third area was, was it just compliance or something like that? So there, I mean, it's not like they're going to spend a lot of time here, but they are going to be available to consult with and to provide our policies and things like that. So, I mean, I can't understand, you know, why we wouldn't do that, because it's no charge, and Russell Wood, who was our HIPAA privacy officer before, is part of our new region, and he and two other people who are pretty knowledgeable about HIPAA would be doing that for the region.
Thank you. The request came from Sturry County to be replied. We just need to...
That's the center of the region?
I think it's going to come from Wayne, who is the...
Wayne Clinton?
Yes. Who is the Chair of the Central Labor Boards.
Yep.
So what we now have to do is decide whether we're going to make a motion to decide or not.
I'll make a motion to make that decision.
To go ahead and request the HIPAA...
Request the HIPAA compliance training.
All right, well, I'll second that. Any discussion? I think it's a great deal from our region that we can do this and save us some money in this way. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Application for liquor license, Pine Lake Country Club.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for liquor license for Pine Lake Country Club.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next we have is a change of status on community services department. This is one with Lynn, and it has to do with, with part of the region and what he does in the region as well. I would like to table this until all three of us are here.
That's fine.
You want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to table the change of status for Lynn until we have all three supervisors here.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Brian will be back in two weeks, on the 30th?
20...
On the 30th?
30th, yep, on the 30th.
And I... So would he be on the 6th then, or...
No, he'll be here for the 30th. He's just gone the 16th and 23rd.
Okay. So I'm on vacation that week, I'm going to be out of state, but for your meeting, but...
You want to be here for it?
I don't know, maybe we can talk. Maybe we can talk.
Okay. We'll schedule it till all of us are there, unless you don't want to be. It's up to you. Next is acknowledged receipt of notice from public, professional, and maintenance employees. This is just the beginning of the union negotiations for, for the secondary roads.
So I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of notice from public officials, from public professionals and maintenance employees.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Can I get a copy of that, or what does that mean? I guess I don't, I haven't been in union negotiations before.
See what the letter was.
It just says they're ready to start, okay.
Looks like it just names him as a rep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Utility permits, secondary roads.
Yes, it says utility permits.
I'll make a motion to approve the utility permit application for Midland Power Cooperative for the purpose of rebuilding 1.8 miles of Phase 1 overhead power lines located at 205th Street, Section 27, Eldora Township.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the utility permit application for Midland Power Cooperative for the purpose of rebuilding first phase overhead power lines, and the third phase overhead lines for new fish farm located 200th Street in Section 19 Buckeye Township.
I'll second that. Any discussion? It's a fish farm.
Growing algae.
Any other discussion?
That's byproduct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve utility permit application by Midland Power Cooperative for the purpose of rebuilding overhead power lines in Section 11, 12, 13, and 14 at the township.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything else, secondary roads?
I know Justin has complained about the railroad crossing near south of the Balden and the Canadian National, I think that's what CN stands for, railroad, said they'll start Monday morning and close that road and repair that crossing, and it should be closed for about a week.
Trying to think, they did that road...
Now you can fire over those tracks.
They did that road about 15 years ago, if I remember right. They had it closed.
For that crossing?
Back in the late 90s.
Okay.
So, no, that'll be good, that's a rough road.
Mm-hmm.
Hard on vehicles, hard on trucks, hard on everything.
And then had the initial meeting with Roxanne and the two individuals from FEMA yesterday, so went on the tour and then Wes got them after us. We'll see what happens.
You see in the paper, 250,000 plus...
That's what we figure our minimum costs are. Just, we're still...
Still adding.
Still adding.
Sounds good. Next is approval agreement with Iowa DOT for bridge replacement, project south of Steamboat Rock, agreement number 1-14-HBP-S-024.
That's to secure the federal funding for that bridge. It's right on the south side of Steamboat on S-56 there, right in the bottom, just south of the cemetery.
Okay.
And just north of the Turnoff for Tower Rock, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and that's the bridge I talked to Wes about, they have real no access to the north side of that Ruby Wildlife Area there, so we're hoping to incorporate something in there for conservation, so they can access that property.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for Iowa DOT for a bridge replacement project south of Steamboat Rock, agreement number 1-14-HBP-S-024.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is approval proposal from Callan &amp; Burns for Design Services of Bridge Number 5088 located on S-27.
This one is just north of Highway 20, and the deck is bad on that, so it'll be just a deck replacement we're looking at. They designed one for us...
Is that where that Cleaves turn is?
No, this is on S-27.
S-27, okay.
Right out of the S-curves, south of the S-curves. That bridge is, it's legal, but we have to do calculations if they want to do an overweight on it, so, and right now the deck is busting hard, so the beams and the butt ones are good, so we're just looking at a deck rehab or replacement, just like we did at Providence or there, north of Long Hill.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for the Callan &amp; Burns for Design Service Bridge Number 5088 located on S-27.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything else, Carol? Next we'll go to other business.
I have some other business I would like to discuss. My name is Kim Haley, and I would like to know how to handle the complaint that I have about one of the supervisors. I called and talked to Jessica Laura on Friday, and I talked to her on Monday, and she stated that I should come to the meeting or write a letter to the editor. My complaint is that on April 18th, I came up to apply for a job in the reporter's office. Ron Rickles pulled me aside in the hallway and whispered to me that I might be jumping from the frying pan into the fire. Ron stated that the reporter has a hard time keeping help and that she is a Republican. I was very offended by this type of behavior being exhibited by a county supervisor in a county building on taxpayer dollars. Mr. Rickles set a standard of behavior on a committee that he is on. Why does he not have to live up to the same standard? Why are there two sets of standards? Why was being a Republican a bad thing?
She's a Republican.
No, Barb's a Democrat.
I know that, but that's not what you told me. I was very offended by that. So that is my first set of questions.
She's a Democrat.
I know, but you did say she was a Republican. So anyway, I have a question about that. So are you saying that this did not handle...
Proof that I said that she's a Republican?
Yes, it's on tape.
So you go around taping people?
Sometimes, just like you guys do. Anyway, that's my first set of questions. I would like to know if the county, who is the county? When you guys have to make a decision for the county, is that the Board of Supervisors or is that one individual?
Depends what the decision is on, as far as the county goes, that's a broad answer. I don't know if I can answer that frankly.
Okay, okay, because that's important to me, because there's some stuff that has been going on, that one person has been acting as the county, and grievances have been filed and ignored, civil rights have been filed, so I guess I would like to know if that's on one person or the county, who I would talk to about that. So that's one of my issues. The second issue that I have, and I do have a copy of this...
I want, I might can answer to that, because I'm concerned about who's paying for attorneys. I think that there is an agency that's paying for some people's attorneys when it's a person, when it should be the person who was actually charged with the civil rights issues.
I'd have to check in on that one, I can't answer that right away.
So will you get back to us and let us know who's paying for the two attorneys?
Do you have a list of the two attorneys and things?
I have, right here, Ron Rickles and Mike White have, between the two of them, eight or nine civil rights complaints against them, and they've had to respond, and I know how much time it took to put this together, and so I would assume the attorney bill is quite high, and that should not be being paid for by an entity in the county, because it's Mr. Rickles and Mr. White that have the complaints against them.
You're talking on the Green Belt Board in general, correct?
Um, no.
Are you talking against the county or against the Green Belt Board?
No.
Okay.
These are, they specifically say Ron Rickles, Mike White, don't they, Ron?
There was another name.
Pardon me?
There was another name too, right?
Um, that name might be being used as a help make witness too, so we need to leave that one out. I also have a question...
It was filed under Green Belt Home Care though.
It was filed, Green Belt, there's a charge against Green Belt too, but you specifically and personally, and Mike White specifically and personally, it's right here.
We can show you Lance afterwards if you'd like to see some of the documentation.
Well, one thing I'd like is a list of the questions you got, and then we can put you on, put you on a meeting, so that we can have the answers for you. I can't answer questions out of the blue.
You should be able to answer this one. I noticed that back on June 26th of 2013, that you moved and you seconded to approve the reappointments of the following individuals to the Health Insurance Advisory Committee for the 2013-2014 year. And I was nominated to that, and I did not know this until just the other day. Can you tell me why I was not told about this? Why I was not notified? What is, here's the meeting.
Here's our reappointments on the last meeting.
But can you tell me why I was never told about it? What did I miss? Can I get the meeting minutes? How long was I appointed for, let alone reappointed?
On the advisory committee, this is a committee that we just readvised everybody that was on the current board.
I had not been on that.
You have not been on it?
I didn't know anything about it until just the other day, and I came upon accidentally. So, you know, I guess I have a few questions about why I was never notified, especially when we had a lot of differences on the insurance.
You should have been on the board from the previous year.
No.
That you haven't been notified of as well.
You can go back and look, but I had never been notified, and my boss had never been notified.
I am supervisor, I have never been notified to be on the committee either.
So am I still on this committee? Am I not? What is expected of me? What had been expected of me?
Good questions.
I know, I was a little surprised. My next issue, that this does have to do with Green Belt, and Lance, I'm going to give this to you, because Ron already knows about all this, but this was in the newspaper, that, you can read that, I made it nice and big, that they said having, what is her name, another person, oh, Kelly Knott, that it's, it was illegal to have her be interim administrator. I received a check. She's still signing the checks for Green Belt Home Care, and I guess I'm wondering why, if she's not the administrator, why she's signing checks for Green Belt Home Care, especially when she's a hospital employee and the hospital is fiscal oversight, so I would think that that would be a breach of fiduciary duties. And as a third owner of Green Belt Home Care, I just wondered if you were aware of that.
Well, in numerous calls have been made to Green Belt and the hospital, and you ask us people who's ever in charge of Green Belt Home Care, and every call, whether you're a physician, a nurse, or a community member, you are referred to Kelly Knott, so she in fact is acting as administrator.
But according to the newspaper, it says it's illegal. So I just wanted to see if you were, if Mr. Rickles is communicating well with you, stating that, you know, the hospital is in control of this checkbook.
He has communicated with us in a lot of things to recall what everything was communicated.
I might want to see some of our paperwork. You may want to see some of our paperwork and listen to some of their meetings. You might be surprised at what he has communicated and has not. So that's, I just wanted to know if you had, if you were aware of all this other situation. So Ron, why is Kelly still signing checks? If she's not the administrator, because when Nancy was the administrator, nobody signed checks.
Well, Brittany's the administrator.
So why is somebody from the hospital signing all the checks?
Well, I would guess that Brittany's telling her to.
No, I would guess that Mike White is telling her to.
So we're just guessing, we're all guessing.
Well, you're on the board, you're on the board.
You're on the board, you should know.
You're the third owner, you, you, that's what I'm asking.
I've been told that Brittany is the administrator.
Then why isn't she signing the checks? Who's the fiscal oversight then? If, if Hanson Family Hospital is the fiscal oversight, who's watching them to make sure that all the funds are being appropriated correctly?
Well, and when you go to the bank also...
Again, again, I can check into this and get you answers.
Please do.
And have another, and have another meeting, where it's all agendaed that we know what the questions are, so we can have answers for them.
I would love to know that. Thanks a lot.
The other thing is, is that when you go to the bank, there's two people that are allowed information on the account, that's Mike White and Katie Reek. Again, they're the fiscal oversight, that's the fox watching the hen house, and that, according to IAA or IRS rules, and Medicaid or Medicare, is not okay. Those are all breaches. Okay?
Go through that one again, Nancy.
I think you have, you've told him this a couple of times.
Fill me in again.
It's on tape.
Um, when you go to Harden County Bank, the only people on the accounts besides Kelly to sign is Mike White and Katie Reek. So another board member cannot go to the bank and say, hey, I want to know what's going on with the fiscals for Green Belt Home Care. Actually, that's a category of fraud, possibly, and that is the fiduciary being in complete control of the money. That's the fox watching the hen house. That is not okay. There should be three layers there. There are not three layers.
Didn't accounts go through Ellsworth Hospital before with you?
No.
No. In fact, at one time, Mike White and another employee were on the accounts as well, and they were on them, but so was the administrator, there was many people on them, and we had to change the rights to transfer money to Amy, because on two occasions payroll bounced, because Mike White did not transfer the funds to the payroll account, twice. So maybe it's not a good idea to be doing that, for one, there hasn't been due diligence in the past, for two, he's supposed to be the fiscal oversight. Why is the fiscal oversight controlling all of that? That's not how it works. You need to go read the IRS code.
I think I tried to do that in January, to do a new conflict, conflict of interest, and you told me you wouldn't sign it, because you believed you could have a conflict of interest. It's on tape. I've typed it up in the meeting, so if you had a potential conflict of interest, and actually Steve Mulford was there, and he said he potentially had a conflict of interest.
The hospital does have a conflict of interest on several businesses that we are in together.
That was the meeting before all of a sudden these red flags came up.
Right.
Yeah.
The other question I have is, it's not a question, this is, and this is not even a request, this is a demand. I was terminated or asked to be forced out approximately the 17th of April. You actually got termination to happen May 9th.
After three hush letters.
Right.
Oh, two, the third one came later.
Right.
Hush letters.
Oh, yeah, I have it if you would like to see it.
Community.
It was May 7th.
Yeah, the hush letters.
The, well, I understand what you're calling the hush letters, okay.
Same thing that the governor called hush letters. Same thing that the governor called hush letters. Anyway, the problem I have is this. When you go to the state Attorney General's website, when you go to Medicare's website, when you deal with about 12 entities, my name and my social security number have not been removed from any of those things. And that day, with you sitting next to me, I looked at you and Mr. White and asked you if you had a plan. And I also said, and it's on tape, you will call Medicare...
Mike, Katie, and I that night? And so you asked what now?
If you had a plan, if you're gonna exit all these people, do you have a plan? You both said yes. I said, I looked at Mike White and I said, so you need to call Medicare and Medicaid today. Today. Yep, yep, yep. But still, according to the state of Iowa, Medicare, Medicaid, and several other, because that's a big thing to change, so you have to have a plan. None of it's been changed. Green Belt Home Care is operating under my name, my social security number. The tax ID number is assigned to me and everything. And so where's my paycheck? And that's fraud. And obviously, there wasn't a plan.
Lance, we can show you some of the documentation if you wanna follow up on it later. I appreciate that. I have it with me.
Well, Ron has copies too, because the...
I would, I would like to have the questions.
That was written up by Alyssa, our legal...
The one who told us the only reason...
So you have hired Alyssa as well, on your own?
No, that was through Green Belt Home Care.
Oh, you're talking about the hush letter?
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the fact that you guys needed to have an exit plan.
And what Mike was telling you was scripted through the legal.
You know what? Here's the deal. I have a lawyer too. But I was born into this world, and the good Lord gave me a brain. And when my lawyer says something, that I say, eh, I don't know about that. Then we both go do our homework, and we come back to another consensus maybe. Because lawyers are human beings, just like you, me, a doctor, anybody. They are fallible, they're human, they make mistakes, they meet challenges. And, you know, with the epic failure that this has been, I would say that maybe you should be checking the advice you're getting from that lawyer.
We are.
And who's paying for that? Like Nancy said, who's paying for your guys' mistakes?
We've been following legal counsel all the way through.
But you know what? That's an excuse, and I don't take excuses for my children. I will not take an excuse from an adult. A reason is all I will accept, and that is not a reason. And I'm okay with a reason that, you know what, we screwed up, but we all gotta move on. But, but to blame it on Alyssa or anybody but yourself, you knew it was wrong at the time. You all but admitted it. It says, it's right on my tape. Don't ask me how I feel about this right now.
And I'll give you a good reference.
But only if you vote Democrat.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, that's what I'm asking, Ron, is that my social security number and my name is being...
One thing, one thing's fine. That comment threw too much into it just right there. I'm gonna call it back a little bit.
We'll check into the social security.
I will take a list of your explanations. I will check with our legal counsel here as well, because I'm, I'm not comfortable answering any questions that I don't know the 100% answer to.
I appreciate that.
But I do need a list of them, and then we can come back to a meeting and meet again. I have no problem with that.
Okay, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other business?
Next, I will ask for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.